Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Harwich Planning Board meeting together. We're in Griffin Room Town Hall. It's Tuesday, the 11th of June, at 6:30. As with every planning board meeting, we're going to be recording and taping the proceedings here as required by law. The town is allowed to do this. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to either audio or video record, you're required to inform the chair. So, anybody recording anything? No? Some seats up front. So, we have a couple of things that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. We've had some very productive meetings, and we've had some not-so-productive meetings. So, what I would ask is that everybody in attendance, if you have something to say, we'll gladly get to you, and we'll try to make room for everybody to speak. But I'm going to ask that you respect your neighbors. We're all neighbors. We're all citizens of the town of Harwich. And I would ask that you be gracious, even if you disagree. So, with that being said, we'll move forward. It may be that I have to limit the time that some people speak in order to get everybody up that would like to speak. Okay? So, we have a few items. We have five items on the public hearing portion. We're going to go out of order. We're waiting for Mr. McParland to get back from Boston, so we're hoping that he comes, and we may not be able to move on some items unless we have enough folks to vote on them. So, with that, Charlene, I'd like to start with under number two, 2D, PB 2019-19.
You do need to open the public hearing.
Okay. So, I'd like to open the public hearing and begin with PB 2019-19. Gary Darman, trustee of the Freeman Ellis Family Realty Trust, care of J. Thaddeus Eldridge, PLS of East Southeast, Inc., and they're seeking approval of a two-lot, one-parcel definitive subdivision pursuant to Mass. General Law 41, Section 81-K-GG, and Section 400 of the Code of the Town of Harwich for property located off Orleans Road, just west of number 1051 Orleans Road, map 52 and 62. There is currently no parcel ID associated with this parcel, and within the R-R and W-R overlay districts. This is a proposed Panhandle subdivision with no road proposed. Charlene.
We did receive a letter yesterday from Thaddeus Eldridge of Southeast, Southeast LLC. On behalf of my client, Gary Darman, trustee of the Freeman Ellis Family Trust, Realty Trust, a request at the public hearing on the two-lot, one-parcel definitive subdivision located at Zero Orleans Road, scheduled for June 11, 2016, whoa, 16.
2019.
2019, way back. Meeting be continued to your regular meeting to be held on July 23rd.
Move to continue the public hearing to July 23rd, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 p.m.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, moved. That will be continued. The next item, Charlene, that I'd like to proceed to is an open. This issue is PB 2019-20. Mark and Andrea Toomey, care of J. Thaddeus Eldridge, PLS East Southeast, Inc., seeks approval of a two-lot definitive subdivision pursuant to Mass. General Law, Code 41, Section 81-K-GG, and Section 400 of the Code of the Town of Harwich for property located at Zero Long Pond Drive, map 102, parcel E1-2, in the RR zoning district. Charlene.
And we have received a letter, which I just lost, again, from Thaddeus Eldridge, Southeast, Southeast LLC, June 10, 2019. On behalf of my clients, Mark and Andrea Toomey, request that the public hearing on the two-lot definitive subdivision located at Zero Long Pond Drive, scheduled for June 11, 2019. Meeting be continued to your regular meeting to be held June 25, 2019.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move that the public hearing PB 2019-20 be continued until June 25, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 p.m.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item that I'd like to go to, again, Charlene, this is out of order. This is also another continuance. It's PB 2019-15, Deerfield Nominee Trust. William Marsh, as owner, seeks approval of site plan review special permit with waivers for new construction of 5,845-square-foot metal structure for industrial use. The property is located at 4 Deerfield Road, map 45, parcel T1-7, in the I-L zoning district. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51 and -55, and this has been continued from 5:14:19.
Actually, it was 5:30:19. That was an error, and that doesn't really matter. I did receive an email at 5:03. I'm glad I checked my email before I came in, that we will be requesting, we are requesting a continuance of the public hearing to August 13, 2019, following the ZBA meeting on 7:31:19.
Okay.
So, I move that the public hearing for PB 2019-15, Deerfield Nominee Trust, be continued to August 13, 2019, no earlier than 6:30 p.m.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, moved. Charlene, again, out of order.
Do you want to check with the first applicant to see if they want to wait, or it's entirely up to?
Harwich Retail?
Yeah. You don't open it. Just say, "Do you want to go, or do you want to wait for Mr. McParland?"
So, we don't?
You don't lean back, because?
We? It's just that I'm so comfortable. I've seen so many of you so many times. It's great. So, if you would like to proceed, you may. We can't really vote on all of this yet, so.
Well, you can't. You can't even proceed.
We can't proceed, so.
Until Mr. McParland gets here.
Till McParland gets here. So, we can take a?
Or just take it out of order and take?
Yeah. We can go with 2019-18, if that's okay.
Or we can just continue.
Do you know if he is attending?
I checked my email, and the question was, "Do we know if he's coming?" He did have an appointment in Boston, and he called at 4:00. I saw what the traffic was doing in Boston. It was not looking good. So, I don't know if he's on his way or not. I do not have his cell number. I don't know if anybody else does, if somebody wants to try and give him a call.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
We can do that.
Okay. Five minutes, and we'll be back. Thank you. I'll try to call him.
How'd you hit him? No, I'm kidding.
You've got to get control.
Excuse me. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. Thank you for your patience. At this point, I would like to continue the meeting with PB 2019-03, Harwich Retail as applicant. We've read this many times since January, so I don't think we repeat everything. I do want you to know that we have had quite a few letters received as of 3:00 p.m. today. There have been, and I'll read the list of names.
Actually, do you want them to give their presentation first?
We can.
Generally, that's what?
Okay. Then, why don't you guys start with your presentation? Everybody in the audience, I want you to know that I'll go through the names. I'm not going to read every letter. They're all part of this record, and they will be in the file, and I assure you that you're being heard. Okay? So, thank you all very much. Okay. You have the floor, gents.
Yeah, sure. Good evening. For the record, Map One Basie with Boulder Engineering here with Chad Brubaker. Since the last hearing, obviously, there's been a lot of feedback from the town. We felt we had done a project that was, we tried to meet every condition of the town, everything that was requested of us, but we did want to do whatever we could to just, if there was anything we could do to the project to help?
They're having trouble hearing you, Matt. If you want to just hold that?
Yeah. Sure.
Well, it?
Okay.
Stand aside.
I guess stand at the podium a fast.
That'd be great.
Please stand at the podium. That'll help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Map One Basie with Boulder Engineering here with Chad Brubaker of Harwich Retail LLC. At the last hearing, we had had a lot of feedback from the town. We've obviously been coming here since January. We've tried to meet every condition of the town. We've gone through the review process with the town, Mass. DOT. We did hear some feedback on the project in particular. We thought we were hearing comments on potentially preserving the house that's there, the Captain Baker House, and also potentially regarding architecture. I know Mr. Stoltz had made some comments about architecture. Since the last hearing, Chad has met with some members of the community. He met with the town administrator, and then also we met with some of the neighbors earlier this evening, and he can discuss the results of those.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just run through kind of a timeline from the last meeting, and I know, so, since our last meeting, which I believe was May 30. Last week, we had a meeting with the town administrator. The two main topics that we talked about at the last hearing were the architecture and the proposal to save the house and try to work with either the town or a local group on the, you know, renovation and saving of that house. You know, the conversation with the town administrator, he couldn't speak for the select board, but his opinion was that he wasn't sure if the town would want the house and take on that responsibility of the house. He felt that a private, you know, if we had a local group outside of the town that we could work with directly, that that would be probably the best way to go about it. We did meet also with a few individual residents last week as well, and then this afternoon at 4:00, we had a meeting here in this room at 4:00 to, again, take feedback, and, you know, our two focuses primarily were architecture and the house. You know, we got off on a number of different topics today, and traffic, which Matt and I had talked about, the process we filed with DOT. We've been working with them for the last six months on, you know, providing them studies and, you know, meeting their requirements, and they're very detailed on what they require in their analysis, so we've gone through that process. We also talked about, you know, the architecture and the possibility of saving the house. You know, to be honest, there's not a, you know, we still need to have further conversations on saving that house. That's something we're continuing to work on. We, you know, we're willing to donate the property, also make a financial contribution to help with the renovation, which is something we discussed today briefly, you know. But, you know, outside of that, I can walk through a quick, a few minor changes on the architectural plan. We added some shingling around the sides. There's a couple of different options on the sides to help break up it visually. We have a couple of different color options. We did some things with the main entrance to try to kind of soften that a bit. We also, it's tough to tell on those plans right now, but we took a closer look at the house that's there, and there's some moldings above the window that we tried to add a little detail to the windows above there to try to mirror some of those molding features. So, you know, we're, as I said, we're willing to go down the path of saving that house. You know, at this point, you know, we need a party that's interested in working with us to, you know, to go down that path. And with the architecture, you know, we've gotten a lot of different feedback. We feel that fits in with, you know, some other new construction in the town, and, you know, have made a number of changes, so.
Anything else? Yeah. Yeah, sure. On top of just some of the comments from the community we received today, traffic was a big one. As Chad said, we met with, we've been filing with Mass. DOT. We've gotten their email approval of the permit. They're waiting to issue the permit. Do we get local approvals? But we have their approval of that. I know there's a lot of concerns about the traffic on Route 28. I think that's obviously a greater global problem than just our project. Our project's a very low-traffic generator. I can't say that Mass. DOT has got a project in the works for 2024, which is going to be Route 28 from the intersection in Dennis to the west of our site down to the Herring River Bridge. So, I know that's been an item that the community's been worried about, the traffic on that road, and not that our project is a significant portion of that traffic, but I know DOT has identified that, and they have, I think, a $5 million grant to do some improvements along that roadway.
Anything else?
I think I said, yeah.
Thank you very much. Charlene, any comments?
I have nothing to add from the previous staff reports at this point.
Any comments from the board, planning board? Joe?
Mr. Jim, one of the things that bothers me about this project is that nobody talks about the zoning. A piece of property is properly zoned for something like this, and nobody seems to want to talk about the traffic issues, which I think the applicants have taken care of. I mean, you know, these good folks live over there. I understand their concern, but on the other hand, I mean, this has been zoned this way for a very long time.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, if they weren't happy about it, they had a recourse. So, that's my comment about.
And zoning, Mr. McParland, zoning is something that would have to be taken up outside of this?
Absolutely.
Outside of this group. So, that's something that?
Well, if I may, it's not outside of this group, but it's outside of this particular application before the board right now.
Right. Any other comments from anyone?
I don't have any as yet. I'd like to hear from the people that attended the meeting earlier today, if they're going to speak in the public hearing.
All right. Before we get to that, I want to go back to Charlene. As we discussed earlier, the letters received as of 3:00 p.m. today, right? And again, I want to thank everybody publicly for submitting these meetings, or these letters, and hopefully some of you are here. But the letters were received from Sally Urbano, Sebastian Mudry, Mudry, sorry if I didn't pronounce your name properly.
And if there's a number after the person's name, that's how many letters they sent.
Sebastian sent three. Valerie Smith, Susan Lane, Patricia Gazel, Gazel, hope that's correct, Joseph McNeil, Karen Palumbo, Don Montgomery, Virginia L. Doyle, Nina Schueßler, Cindy Kozlowski, Laura, and there's no last name, sorry about that, Susan Speakman, Jay Duncan Berry, Dr. Berry, Jane Conlin, Mary and John Rowan, Robert V. Albus, two letters from Mr. Albus, Mary Albus, Judith Blatchford, Ann Stewart, Sarah Williams, Ms. Williams, Brenda L. Collins, Liz Donovan, Kristen Berry, Karen Horn, Danny Horn, Georgine Riedel, Dorothy M. and Lawrence B. Damon Jr., James W. Igo, Helen A. Baker, Becky Overman, and Patricia Torek. Thank you all very, very much. So, those are, as I said earlier, a part of the record. So, if there are?
Do you want to read the?
Oh, good point.
That's kind of the point.
Yeah. So, rather than read all these letters individually, here's a summary of the bullet points taken from these letters.
In no particular order.
In no particular order, but here they are. So, the location of the proposal in the Captain Row area, that's an issue. Dollar General is unwelcome in the West Harwich historic area. Less than two-tenths of a mile is a Dollar Tree and Ocean State Job Lot. Zoning laws are out of date. The planning board feels it has its hands tied. Refer the demolition of the structure at 52 Route 28 to Cape Cod Commission for review. West Harwich is the gateway into Harwich on Route 28, should be an area we are proud of to have as its first introduction. A box-like chain store is out of character for this area and will be a blight to the town. Again, refer the project to Cape Cod Commission as a DRI. Simply vote no. This will lower property values. Increase traffic?
Sorry, Mr. Jim.
When that happens.
Sorry.
It's okay, Joe. Increase traffic in the area. Increased use of residential streets to avoid the area. Several large retail buildings in the area are vacant, and then the impact on, I'm assuming, the impact on Herring River watershed. So, those are the items in sum that we've taken from these letters.
And I did read them all.
Yes. Yes, we have read them all. So?
Can you applaud the contractor?
Excuse me. If you'd like to speak?
I'll catch on.
No, no. You don't have to applaud. If you'd like to speak, please go up, identify yourself, and make your point. We'd love to hear from you.
You do need to go to the podium and use the microphone, because the meeting is being taped.
Yes.
And if you speak just from the audience, no one is going to be able to hear what the comments were.
And we need your name and your address, please.
And there is a sign-up sheet there. Please write neatly, because if I miss your name when you say it, and I can't read your handwriting, you're going to get whatever name I think it is.
Adal Marshon, West Harwich. Any of those letters were for the project?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. We can start from there, then.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Hi, James Hardy, 99 Belznek Road, West Harwich. No, it's just after some neighborhood conversations, we had been told that, that this Dollar General had already been approved. And so there was just some confusion about it. Myself personally and several other people that I've talked to are just opposed to it. As was stated in the letter, you just read that it, there's another Dollar Store very nearby, and it's a sort of, kind of takes away from the charm of old Cape Cod. So that's really all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Actually, I mean, we had been told that this had already gone through, and they were talking today about restoring. Can you just clarify what's going on or exactly? Has it been decided or not?
We haven't voted on anything.
Yeah, okay.
And there was a meeting with some of the, some of the abutters to the property. Mr. Bombesi or Chad, would you like to speak to this?
Fred, based on feedback from the last several hearings at the last meeting, we mentioned the possibility of designing our project around the existing house so that the, the house could remain. So that's something that we've had some conversations on over the last couple of weeks to try to build around it.
Steve Scannell, 836 Route 28. The ideal, I think, would be if the Dollar General people could just pause for a while and then let the town have a little breathing room. If the Dollar General was gracious enough to do that, that'd be wonderful. And then we could possibly get a town meeting together to take some property by negotiated purchase or eminent domain for the good of the charm, as Jim said, you know, the good old Cape Cod or quaint Cape Cod, et cetera. That's our stock in trade, really. That's, that's our bread and butter, you know, your retail store. And we know what your bread and butter is, and that's good. It's not a bad design. There's nothing bad about it, but it, it kind of hearkens to the modern, let's say. Whereas most things on Route 28, starting from Dennis right through to Chatham and into Chatham and all the way to P-Town, basically, that's basically where the line is drawn. And there are some exceptions, but it's very quaint thanks to the good people on the planning board many years ago that zoned Harwich. So I say the ideal would be if there was a pause and Harwich could regroup and do a town meeting, a special town meeting. Nothing, you know, a year away. I mean, a special town meeting is, it wouldn't hold you up too much. And I think we could put it together and maybe find a suitable location as well for the Dollar General where we would all be pleased as punch to shop at.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Carol Kousha Stone. I live at 46 Depot Road West, West Harwich. I've lived there for 44 years or so. I just heard about this 15 minutes ago when someone approached my husband. So I don't read the local paper, but I do care. I am astounded at the stupidity of this. No matter what you do to it, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. I mean, quaint gift shop, we can live with. Dollar General, when you have a cabillion footage right in Deport, that's like extending the commercial end of Dennisport into Harwich. And I don't like it. I'm totally against it. And I would have been here for every one of your other meetings. And I'm representing other people that couldn't come at the last minute. So I, no.
Sir?
My name is John Clancy. I go by Fred. I live at 16 Shaggy Pine Road in West Harwich. Been there over 50 years. And only back in Florida for a few weeks, so I've been behind the times here. But, you know, when you leave Florida for the winter, and you're fortunate to be there, when you come home, and you're driving to Dennisport, and the center of Dennisport hits you first, then you start in West Harwich. And you look here, you look there, you look here. And all you can see is possibilities coming in the future. We've had enough problems in West Harwich the last few years. What are we looking for more for? Why are we looking for more problems? If we put a storefront in there and a group of stores, and we have a little shanty motel there next to it, what are we going to have there? Nothing but hangouts. And if you don't see the handwriting on the wall, God forbid, it's plain as day and you can see what's with upper gets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy McClarty. I live in East Harwich. And I had a question to the board. This old structure is over 100 years old. And I understand the project's been delayed because it's old. I also live in an older home, and I was under the understanding that you had to maintain the look of historic buildings. Is this not the case with this property?
Sure. Mary, please.
So I can take that question. This is not in a historic district. This came before the historic district and historical commission. Because the, the age of the building was over 100 years of age, we have a bylaw in town that requires any demolition to present a notice of intent. They came before the historic commission back in September, perhaps even August. And the historic commission voted the one-year demo delay, which is the maximum allowed under, under the, the historic bylaw. So all that means is that they have to wait the year. And the hope is always that, that a solution will be found during the year. But once the year expires, then the property owner can develop, can demolish the building. So that's what the historic commission did. We had voted the extent to of our ability under our bylaw, and the demo delay was put in place. But as far as aesthetics are concerned, our town planner has explained it at prior meetings. The planning board doesn't, really doesn't dictate aesthetics. It's nice that they're willing to work with the comments. Historic commission can, if it's in a historic district. But this stretch of West Harwich isn't in a historic district under a town bylaw like Harwich Center is.
Right. So, and then my comment. So my home was built in 1865, and putting a foundation, and there was a lot of concern about maintaining the aesthetics. So any alterations, is my understanding, has to stay true to form. And it seems like there's almost an incentive to demolition old properties because that's easier than maintaining. It's almost like a loophole where we wait a year and then we knock it down versus if we're going to maintain it, I don't believe there's a year waiting list. You can just, you just have to maintain the aesthetic. So it seems like a hole in the system. That's my first comment. And my second comment is, after moving back to the Cape, I grew up on the Cape in Catuette. I lived in New Jersey for eight years. I'm a contractor. I'm an electrician. Growing up, I always resented the regulations on construction because that was my trade. And then I moved to New Jersey and had a change of heart. And I thank everybody here and God that the Cape does have regulations to maybe slow down or stop the Cape looking like the Jersey Shore or parts of the Jersey Shore. I can raise my family here. It's a very different feel than living near Route 1 in New Jersey. And that's something you're not going to get back. And I understand everyone can just follow the rules, and we can still end up with a place that doesn't look like what we want it to look like. And so I'm opposed to a Dollar General. I'm opposed to all the construction that I'm seeing at an alarming rate, even the new firehouse. I feel like the old one is very quaint, looks great. But building codes what they are, sometimes it's just easier to build new. And I feel like there's these loopholes that just make it easier to knock down a beautiful building and build something that isn't in the spirit of Cape Cod. Thank you.
Folks, I know it probably makes everybody feel good, but if you could refrain from the applause, I think we all know where you're coming from. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Mary Albus, 77 Smith Street in West Harwich. Harwich has a local comprehensive plan. Basically, it directs the energies of the town's employees, volunteers, and elected officials. When I served on the Harwich Conservation Commission, we often looked at this plan. Basically, it's a plan for the future of Harwich. On page 19 of that plan, there's growth management locations. If I may, I'd like to read it. It's a short paragraph.
Sure.
It says, "Harwich has much to protect: its natural environment, its village character, its scenic beauty, and its varied population. As the community moves forward, it must balance protection of the existing amenities with jobs, housing, and other future needs. The task, frequently termed growth management, is one of the central components of the local comprehensive plan. As you, the planning board, listen to our concerns, please keep in mind that this is more than just the design of a building. It's about protecting the carriage, character of a village and really all the other small towns on Cape Cod. For these reasons, and also for some serious safety concerns, I urge you to refer this to the Cape Cod Commission." Thank you.
So there, thank you very much. You make some great points. Is there anyone else?
Thanks. Susan Quinn, West Harwich. You know, respectfully disagree that zoning hasn't been discussed. It was at the last planning board meeting, and I thought it was discussed pretty well. Charlene gave a great overview of what the current zoning is and that it's outdated from the 70s, and we can't change it tonight. But what the board can do is refer this to the Cape Cod Commission. That's entirely within, you know, your power to do. And we really implore you to please do that.
Okay. So for the record, and this is not something that I think a lot of you will like to hear, there are a few things, there are a few criteria that we really do have to meet. The size of this structure is 7,500 square feet. Okay? The minimum threshold for the, for the Cape Cod Commission is 10,000 square feet. That was explained. I know that's a difficult point. The impact on the region is also another point. We're talking about one building, right? One building, the captain's building in this area. So if we're going to focus on something, it might be on how we're going to save this house and, and, you know, focus on something positive. But at this point, I can tell you that as the chair of the board, and I'm not speaking for the board, it's very difficult to make a case to refer this to the Cape Cod Commission at this point. If you'd like us to continue this, give some more time and some more thought to this, we can certainly do that. And I know that may not be what you'd like to hear, but it's more time. Sir?
Thank you for hearing me. Robert Albus, Smith Street, West Harwich. I just wanted to share some information from Deerfield that I think is relevant. Near the end of the previous year, Deerfield in Western Mass, which is not hostile to business, it's the site of Yankee Candle, that's a 30,000-square-foot retail space, they rejected a move by this organization to bring in a Dollar General, the planning board did. And the reasons for this, as reported by the Greenfield Recorder, are that there were problems with traffic flow, pedestrian safety, environmental impact, and the town's aesthetic character. All four of those things, I think, are relevant to West Harwich. I think everyone would agree with that. You may say that Deerfield is not Harwich, Harwich is not Deerfield. It's true. But, you know, that planning board had the resolve to reject that project. They did not have the recourse that we do here with the Cape Cod Commission. I understand it's difficult, but if it's not impossible, I hope we can proceed with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Susan? Sally, sorry.
Good evening. My name's Sally. They call me Sally. I live at 152 Riverside Drive. Yes, time would be greatly appreciated. And anything that we can offer to you in that regard, we will, because we understand about zoning. But we also heard from John Ideman. We, Duncan and I, met with Sarah Kordoff of the Cape Cod Commission. My understanding is that time is what we could gain by, it's an individual referral. You're right, it's not an automatic referral.
Right.
But an individual referral could give us time to continue to put in place those zoning laws. We've already started the process. We already have multi-facets going on in this, in this neighborhood. And I keep thinking about the Harwich Conservation Trust. When it started, it was the last, Harwich was the last town to come into the compact. It was not, it was not greeted in a, in a great way, but they persevered because they saw what was going to happen. These folks see what's going to happen with one building in there without zoning laws, and then it's going to move right on down, and we're going to become part of the swirl of Route 28. And we don't, we don't want that. So if you, if you could please consider, I think it's legal, I think we could, we could really gain some time if you could do that referral to the Cape Cod Commission. We would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Diane Buffard. I'm a new homeowner here, six years, unlike many of you. I'm initially from Vermont. I dreamt all my life to move to Harwich because I just, I love it here. And what you're talking about, destroying the history that Harwich has, that the Cape has, I saw in Vermont all my life. The box stores, you say it's one building. It starts one building, oh, let's do another, let's do another, let's do another. People say it's all about the money, and that's true. But it's not. It's about the people. And that needs to be taken into consideration. I'm only here four, five months out of the year, and I avoid 28, like the plague, during certain months because of the traffic. And to take something that is so historic is just going to ruin it for all future people that are, want to come in.
Thank you very much.
My husband did ask me not to put in my two cents. He's back in Florida. He's not here, so I'm putting it in anyway.
I think, I think a lot of husbands have that same problem. It's okay. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Hi, I'm Beth Williams of 45 Route 28, right across the street. We're all here pleading for our town. We're pleading for our neighborhood. That's what we've been doing, time after time after time. We're pleading for the soul of our, our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Pariscan. My husband, at the last meeting, got up and spoke. We have memories of that building. We lived upstairs. My family and I, when my husband was going to seminary, we lived there, and he worked part-time at the First Baptist Church. So that corner is very special, not just because of that. I do have a question. I had heard in some information and news things that I've read that the Dollar General actually now is going to get permits to sell liquor. And... And I just want to know if that's something that you know about. Just address to the fellows there.
Yeah, sure. As has been discussed at all the meetings, you know, we're permitting this as a general retail store. We did disclose at the first hearing that Dollar General is a client of ours, so to say that they're the definite user, you know, I just want to caution that. But to say that liquor, you know, I know that's a state law. I don't know the details on liquor versus beer and wine. I do know in grocery stores, for example, and, you know, other types of drugstores and, you know, I think are getting licenses now to sell beer and wine. I think there's a difference between beer and wine and liquor, so I think that would be to be determined based on liquor license and state laws.
And as I understand it, and I may be wrong, but aren't liquor licenses?
Liquor licenses are granted by the Board of Selectmen.
By the Board, yeah, the Board of Selectmen.
Beer and wine and liquor are controlled entirely by the Board of Selectmen. We do not have a licensing board in this town. The Board of Selectmen do that.
Right. The only point I was making is if they, if Dollar General applied for that, then they could be granted that, correct?
If the Board of Selectmen would approve it.
Right, okay. Well, what I just want to say is my vote is also no to the Dollar General, and I would please ask you to consider bringing this before the Cape Cod Commission. I grew up in Harwich, my husband and I went away. We grew up on Bank Street, and then we lived in the exact home that you're talking about. And I know that sounds all mushy, but the fact is, is that this is a serious thing for people that live here year-round. And I would just please ask you to consider. I thank you for all of your time that you've all served and the letters that have been written. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary?
I just, to follow up on the last point that Mr. McCarlin made, there is, there's no application, there's no approval on a building yet, there's no tenant yet. A tenant would have to seek a liquor license through the Board of Selectmen. So any speculation on all of that has nothing to do with this board and nothing to do with this hearing. So I just don't want us to get too far afield, and we have enough to deal with on the permitting of this building alone. So I would just caution everybody, again, as they've said, everybody's assuming that it's a Dollar General, and it very well could be, it very well could be another client of theirs. So there's no liquor license application that anybody's heard of for this location. So.
No, that's a good point, Mary.
Mary Albus?
Hi, Mary.
Hi. This afternoon, about 20 residents and I had a meeting with these two gentlemen, and we greatly appreciate them meeting with us and listening to our concerns. At that meeting, I think I asked you directly, Mr. Brubaker, if you had applied for liquor license, and you said no. However, at that time, you did say that there are Dollar Generals in Massachusetts that do sell beer and wine. Supposing this is actually a Dollar General and not something else?
What was said, I do know Dollar General is a retailer, and a lot of other retailers in certain states do sell beer and wine. I don't know if it's in Massachusetts if they do. I know, I haven't lived in Massachusetts my whole life, I'm from Pennsylvania, but I know that in the last couple of years, and I also don't drink, so I don't know this, so I don't, I think the liquor laws have changed where certain retailers are now, you can do beer and wine at like a 7-Eleven or other stores, and I don't think 10 years ago you could do that. Is that correct in Massachusetts? So, you know, it is possible any future tenant of that building, whether it's Dollar General, or, you know, as we've talked about, the building will hopefully be there a long time. Tenants will change, you know, they would have to go through the proper permitting process.
Thank you. Can I bring up one more point about meeting this afternoon? By far, the greatest concern of the residents is a safety issue. And so we asked these two gentlemen about the traffic study that had been done, and they frequently have talked about a Mass DOT traffic study, which seemed to me very general in nature and not specific to the village of West Harwich and the site. So we asked if we could have a copy of that, and they said that they would be forthcoming with that so that we could take a look at that. At the meeting, we also asked them if they would be willing to conduct a more thorough traffic study for this particular area, similar to what Habitat for Humanity had to do when they were looking at affordable housing in West Harwich. I am under the impression that they had to do some kind of traffic study about cars in and out. And so we asked these two gentlemen if they would do that, an unbiased traffic engineer who would come in and look at the traffic at the height of the summer season, when it backs up all the way to the Herring River, at traffic going down all the side streets, setting up those boxes that look at number of cars going down the street, as well as the speed of those cars. And for a long time, I didn't get an answer to my question until a nice woman spoke up and said, "Please answer this lady's question." And the answer was no, that they felt that they had done the traffic study that they needed to do, and they would not be willing to do a further traffic study to alleviate the concerns of the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mary Ann Soyster in West Harwich. I need some clarification. You are saying that these gentlemen work for a firm, Dollar General is one of their stores, but some other store could come in? Could you explain that? So we're wondering about Dollar General? My gosh, what else could they possibly bring in? Who are their other clients?
It's a good question.
So just to kind of step back to our very first meeting in January or February, I'm a representative of LaScotty Development. We have an agreement to purchase the property from the current owner. We currently do not own the property. So our business, we develop retail stores, we work for several large retail clients. Mentioned at our first meeting, one of our main clients is Dollar General. We do have certain confidentiality agreements till leases are signed and things, so, you know, we've been permitting this as a general retail store. The other fact of that is that, as I just mentioned, this building will be here a long time. Tenants can change, they could change in the first year, they could change 20 years from now. That building will stay. You know, we certainly want an attractive building that we can rent in the future to, you know, the tenant could change, you know, down the line. And certainly, you know, it's, there's a lot of research and background that has gone into the viability of a store there, so.
So Chad, if you can, do you have any other firms that you represent that you can share with us, or no?
At the first meeting, I mentioned, you know, we've done work with all the major auto parts stores, Advance, we do tractor supply, we do, you know, various, we do Bridgestone Firestone, we do, you know, we work with, we have some shopping center projects where we work with, you know, a wide range of retail clients, so.
Okay.
You know, we're not, it's been brought up several times, are we looking to get it approved and then put a marijuana shop in there? And that's, I can guarantee that's not on our radar and wouldn't be approved by the zoning.
It's illegal in this town, too, so.
It's not zoned.
Okay, it's not, it's not zoned.
Karen Horn, 34 Smith Street, West Harwich. I thought I had three points to make, but thanks to the two people who spoke before me, I have five. I will make it quick. The gentleman in front here mentioned in his presentation that there was some grant money for road improvements. Could you just speak to that as to which roads would be improved in that grant money?
Charlene, let Charlene do it.
Mass DOT is working with the towns of Dennis and Harwich to make improvements along Route 28 from, Dennisport is already doing it in their section of road. It's a mess there now, but it's going to be a lot better. We are also looking from the town line with Dennis, Harwich, to the Herring River. So that would be done through what's called the TIP, Traffic Improvement Program, and it is on the TIP. It had been on the TIP for 2023. I think it got bounced to 2024. And having been a past member of the Joint Transportation Committee, representing another town I worked for, there's always a tip of the day, it will change, so I don't know when this could possibly come forward. But that's what it would be done under, would be the Traffic Improvement Program.
So it's none of the side roads we're talking about, just 28?
Strictly Route 28.
Okay, thank you. And regarding the issue Mary brought up about requesting, the discussion about a traffic study, I was not at the meeting, but my comment to that would be, just like when we are dealing with our young children, if you are unwilling to discuss something or unwilling to pursue something, I feel like that's because you have something to hide or you will not like the outcome of the independent traffic study. That in itself is a huge red flag. If they have nothing to hide and they have no concerns about traffic and zoning, then they would be more than willing to bring in, or allow us or the town to bring in an independent traffic study. So I would say to this board, that to me is a huge red flag. As far as trying to come up with a way to preserve the Baker House, to perhaps have the town purchase it, or some neighbors, I really feel like that's a pacifier. The point is not to, of course, we want to preserve that building. It's historic significance. Preserving that building and putting that building next to it is like oxymoron. It just makes no sense. It's a way to pacify the neighborhood, and it's not going to work. We want that house where it is, and we want it properly restored to be part of Captain's Row. It has no place surrounded by a parking lot and a retail building. And what was my, finally? I have a list here of some of the scoping issues to, that shows if a project could be brought to the Cape Cod Commission, and I just would like to point out some of them, and we, I see three or four right off the bat, so I don't know what the hesitation is with sending it there, but is the building in a historic district? Is it not historic district per se, but is culturally and historically significant? And that has already been brought up. There is a building on the property which is more than 75 years old and is historically significant? The answer is yes. Is the development proposed within a distinct area such as historic or cultural significance? Yes, it is. And finally, has the public identified issues and concerns? I don't think I even need to answer that one. And so I feel like we, this project more than qualifies for referral to the Cape Cod Commission, so I am, I don't even know if there's a word more than implore, but whatever that word is, I implore you to do that. Please hand it over and let them look at this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ann Stewart, Pleasant Lake. I'm just going to address what she brought up about the Cape Cod Commission. If you could please clarify, Mr. Joyce, what you said earlier. I believe you said that you folks are not going to be happy with this, but they won't take something that has the 7,500-square-foot that this building would have. It has to be more like 10,000 square feet. Did I understand that correctly? And if that is the case, is it possible to have an exception be made? Thank you.
If I might.
Yes.
For an automatic referral to the Cape Cod Commission, a building needs to be 10,000 square feet or more. This building is 7,489. I think that's going to be drilled into my brain forever. However, that does not preclude a project to be referred, and the list is up on the screen, what is called a limited discretionary referral, and there's another term. And there are a number of different, there's water resources, ocean resources, wetland, blah, 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 you can read it yourself, I'm not going to go through them all. But what John Ideman made very clear is that if there is a referral, whether it's from this board, the Board of Selectmen, I mean, there's a number of entities, town boards and committees in town that could refer this. Individuals cannot, except for the building commissioner, so don't run to me and go, "Please refer it," because I have no power to do that. Only if it's mandatory can I do that. But anyway, but what John Ideman from the Cape Cod Commission made very clear, and I think is the hard thing to possibly describe here, is a project can be referred, but it needs to be demonstrated by the planning board that it does have a regional, regional impact. Overemphasize regional, because regional does not just mean Harwich. Regional means regional. So beyond our borders, you know, that kind of thing. So that, there is a possibility for a limited discretionary referral. The board would have to be specific as to which elements it would be referring to, and what the regional impact is that they feel it precipitates for the commission to accept it. Just to go back a little bit, the Cape Cod Commission will look at the limited discretionary referral. The local time clock will continue to tick. If the Cape Cod Commission chooses not to accept it as a referral, then it comes back to this board. And that's when we run into, and it's not an issue for you guys, it's an issue for this board and the applicant, is that we're only going to be down to four members who can vote on this. With a seven-member board, you need a supermajority regardless of whether all those positions are filled or not. So our chairman is leaving, I mean, actually chained to the table so he can't, you know, we'll be down to six members. However, we're only down to five members who sat on this originally, who are able to vote. That's Mary Misowski, that's Jim, it's Joe, David, and Craig. So if after July 1, the Cape Cod Commission says, "No, we are not going to accept it," because they do have a time period in which they have to vote on whether accept it or not. If they do accept it, then that is a little bit of a horse of a different color, because the process can take time. I believe John said anywhere from, you know, four months to a year, generally around seven months. At that time, a lot can change in those months. When it came back to this board, it would be re-advertised for a new public hearing because oftentimes, the original board isn't in existence anymore. So it would kind of start over again at the local level, but we do have a logistics problem that needs to be figured out with the board, with the applicant, on, you know, how to proceed if, for some reason, this does go beyond July 1, because you have one more meeting after this. You know, just how it's going to move forward from there. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. I'm not suggesting that, you know, anybody rush to make any kind of a decision, one way or another, on this, positive or negative, or, you know, sending it to the Cape Cod Commission, but that there is a logistical issue that we are going to be facing on this.
You know, Charlene, I'm really glad you brought that stuff up, and I think if anybody in the audience thinks we've rushed, please tell us, because we've been, I think, fairly collaborative. We've listened to folks, we've arranged meetings with the abutters. I think we've given more than everyone opportunity to speak up, and I think you all have done a great job. I mean, there's plenty of interest here in this. I'd like you to know that we can't really make this decision tonight. I don't feel we can. My suggestion at this point would be to continue this discussion until the next meeting. I think if we would move on this, we would be moving in haste, and I don't think that's the right thing to do. So I would like to suggest that we close the discussion. I think we've heard.
You don't use the word "close."
Close, okay. Continue the discussion. Sorry, I'm, you know, relatively new. But I feel strongly that a lot of great points have been made, and I don't think we have everything in front of us to say one way or the other about how this should go. And I really believe that if anybody on this board disagrees with me, they'll speak up, because I'm not a dictator, I'm just the chair. That's it. So, Craig?
Mr. Chairman, not to disagree, in fact, I agree with the comment you made earlier that it is reading that it is reading the commission's rules and regulations.
Yep.
And hearing from, I think it was John Idman, the chief regulator.
Idman.
Idman, thank you. It, I, I'm in agreement with you, that it's pretty difficult, understanding that, to make this referral. And I would just like to clarify, or reiterate, on top of what Charlene said, and I'm going to read from, a, a brief sentence from the commission webpage. "The commission's regulatory powers are well-defined and generally limited to reviews of large-scale developments known as developments of regional impact. Commission's regulations supplement local authority throughout the fifteen towns. Barnstable County Commission's authority supplements local authority. Towns refer projects to the commission for DRI review as mandatory referrals," which Charlene spoke to, "certain requirements, kick it, make it mandatory, ten thousand square feet, and so forth."
Is only one of many.
"...or discretionary referrals, which towns use at their option to seek commission consideration of specific project-related impacts." And when the chief regulator was here, he expressed the opinion that he felt this project, as he understood it, the one house with historical nature, doesn't meet the requirement, and I don't want to speak for him.
I, I have a clarification on that.
Oh, I was going to say, the regional impact is really, and somebody else said it earlier, the regional impact is what would, in my mind, drive this. And I'd also like to, to add on, or reiterate to what Joe said, too. This is zoned for this type of development, and I think that the applicants have been extremely willing to work with us, and you folks, and consider, considerations for your concerns as well, so. I, I also have a tough time thinking we should refer this to the commission and give up the, the town planning board authority.
Just to clarify something, because I think we were, I think, I certainly was left with the impression, and I think several members of the board were left with the impression after John Idman spoke, and it was also in the Chronicle, and I know Bill. And she said, oh, there was an error in the Chronicle, sorry, Bill, that, and I think, again, it went to understanding what, what John said, is, we, we were left to believe that the house could not be referred to the Cape Cod Commission as a limited DRI. Sarah Kordjev, who is the Historic Preservation Specialist and Planner, said it could be. So I did ask for clarification, and she said, because it is on the, for lack of a better word, the preliminary National Register list for Captain's Row, that it could qualify as a referral to the commission. So I just wanted to clarify that.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that the commission would accept it.
True. Yeah.
Just a point of clarification. Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Charlene, could you elaborate on the criteria under community design regarding the Cape Cod Commission referral?
Unfortunately, no, I can't. I believe, I believe that has to do with historic preservation and community character, but the regional policy plan update is brand-new. It's only a few months old, so I have not delved into each of these. Some of them go without saying. I do believe the community design does go towards, you know, community character, and historic, and that kind of thing, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
In this context, it could relate to the architectural character of the proposed building.
It could, yes, indeed.
And how it relates to the neighborhood and the historic pressure on the site.
Yes. It could. It could. Keeping in mind, once again, the regional impact of the project.
So that was my follow-up question for you, Charlene, for you, Mr. Chair. The Sarah Kordjev's comments, so, yes, it, it would be okay, because it was part of a larger kind of national historic register application, that needs to still go through the process, I believe.
Yes.
But, did that, that, that wasn't taking the place of the regional requirement? We still had to come up with a finding, this board still has to come up with a finding that it is of regional impact.
That is my understanding. That is my understanding.
Is there any way that we could get a little more clarification on that?
I can certainly speak, you know, reach out to Sarah, at the commission.
That's from, that, that's still the hurdle, I think.
Mm-hmm.
What about the wetland resources that fall under that?
There are no wetlands.
No wetlands.
There are no wetlands there. There's no wildlife or plant habitat, it's not in a natural heritage, open space, I'm not really sure if it triggers that. Coastal resiliency, it's not near the water.
Community design versus cultural heritage, perhaps? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get more clarification on what those terms mean.
Also, quite a few years ago, we had a problem with a plume, a plume there that had to be cleaned up.
That's an issue for the Board of Health, when they do their, whatever they need to do, the Board of Health, that doesn't have anything to do with this board.
Okay. Sir?
Good evening, my name is Duncan Berry. I'm a resident at thirty-seven Route 28. The edge of their property is pretty much lined up with the edge of my property, and I would like to thank the board for your patience, and your consideration of all of us here. We do think that this is a, a big deal. And I would like to help out with maybe some perceptual things, the first of which is more of a technical nature, as it came to me from attorney David Reed this afternoon, who said that looking at the site and the bylaw, it looks to me like about a third of the two lots in question here are in the RM residential zone, where retail use is not permitted. As such, they would seem to need a variance from the Board of Appeals, not merely a special permit from the planning board. The commercial zone runs only two hundred feet from the center line, and he says that this is a case, he, he thinks that this is a little less in the RM zone, but he said, this should be, you know, if it hasn't been brought up, we should be looking at that. So that's one technicality that I think would help give you some ways to get creative about understanding what this means to us. This, to, to me, personally, I have to say, I am not against the commercial development of this part of the Cape. I live here, I think this is actually, Captain's Row is born of commerce. The problem is, is that we've established this fantastic fabric of buildings, from beginning with buildings that were put up in the seventeen forties, all the way down to like the nineteen forties, we've got spectacular, modern buildings here. We don't want to see them all, like, necessarily bulldozed, but we realize, you know, we've got to be realistic about this, and I think, I, I mean, we all realize, these, we've got a problem. And one of our problems is perceptually, we need to see what we have here. This fabric, if you puncture a hole in it, it's not the same fabric. And this is right at the absolute center of the arc that goes from Dennisport all the way across to Herring River, right at the center. And you take one of these buildings out, and you bring a big hole in, we'll have a big, shiny, reflective, modern building with glass, and asphalt, and all this, and that is not going to help us maintain what we have. And this is what I think we're all looking for.
Sure.
Is a way to get creative about helping us, help us get this thing properly taken care of, squared away. We've, I think, one of the things we're looking at is that this is a planning problem. We need to plan. I think we have a, a time crisis here, and the zoning has not worked to our favor. Now, I think, you know, there are all sorts of explanations for that, but I think what we really want to do is work with getting, work with you all, and work with the town, the Board of Selectmen, and actually, in the town meeting, get the zoning laws right, so that when we can welcome a, a enterprise into this neighborhood, that will work with what we have. And this is what I feel like we're dropping a cinder block into a puddle. There, there are twenty-two structures here that qualify for being on the National Register for historical places, twenty-two. You want a regional understanding, there are very few places that have, that are this rich, and that doesn't include anything along the parallel and perpendicular streets. Mass Historic wants to see this whole thing flourish economically, vitally, you know, you want to make arguments about, you know, the economic vitalization of this, just look at what's going on at eighty-seven. That magnificent, I don't know if you all have seen the yellow Italianate villa, that this woman who owns it has put, has kept probably half a dozen to a dozen men occupied for eighteen months. You talk about jobs, you talk about raising tax revenue, the tax base for the town, this is what we want to see. We want to encourage, and we want the structure in place. So if you can help us get the time necessary to get the zoning in place, I think we will serve, you know, kill a couple of birds with one stone. And, you know, if LaScotty wants to come back and play ball with the kind of new zoning, I think that would be great. Let's talk about that. But can we, can you help us get our zoning right, so we don't have this, it will be like a regional kind of domino effect of one thing after another, and it's a compare, it's like human nature. So we beseech you, implore, beg you to get creative, because, you know what, planning and strategy starts where the numbers end. We know the numbers. The vision is different. We live here.
So, Dr. Berry, what are the numbers?
What are the numbers?
Yeah.
So I believe the numbers are, they have a business plan, a business model, and we talked, and we had great conversations, and, you know, I, I concur, I mean, they're trying to be responsible, and, you know, what have you, but they have a business plan, it's algorithmically driven, per-square-foot analysis of traffic patterns, retail price per square, I get it. I mean, I'm in business, too. I understand it.
Yeah.
But it almost, what that produces in commerce, if you go into any grocery store, look at how you market spaghetti sauce, there are something like a hundred and eighty-three spaghetti, different spaghetti sauce flavors. It's a blur. So what you end up with, these mechanical processes are results that do not, you know, speak to our human side, our human nature, and what we have here to preserve is this really deep, rich history.
Yep.
And I think the numbers speak very well for the kind of thing that are going on at eighty-seven Main Street, where we are, you know, people are investing in it, we have people that own a hotel on Belmont Street that have invested massive amounts of money. I mean, this is where we want to encourage. Can you help us encourage to get the kind of numerical revenue results that we all want?
Has anybody offered from the community to do what has been done by the folks that you're referring to? Has anybody come up with money? I mean, you know, they're trying to buy this lot of this property, why don't, why doesn't somebody buy it?
We'd love to. We, we actually have found buyers, three buyers for a previous property that we couldn't close the sale on, because the seller didn't want to do it. So we can find people, if you want to, we will find people to buy the house.
But what about the entire property?
That's, that's another question, we'll have to figure that out.
So my suggestion is we continue this until the next meeting? Can we do that?
Move to continue to June twenty-fifth, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, we, we're taking a vote, sorry. Sorry, man. Go ahead.
Move to continue to June twenty-fifth.
All in favor?
Not earlier than six-thirty? You need a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item is...
Can we, they're going to take some time to clear out, can we take a brief recess?
Take five minutes. Call this meeting back to order again?
Oh, yeah, you gotta wait for Alan.
We'll wait for Alan for a moment.
And you did already read all of this into the...
Yep.
So you don't have to read again. The legal notice. It's quite lengthy.
Here's the order. Went here to Deerfield. They didn't come. We continued it. Then we went to Harwich Retail, and now we're gonna finish up with this. Okay?
All right.
Okay, so we will continue our discussion with PV 2019-18, Samil Patel. And as applicant, Mr. Kahoon, you're here. I'm not going to read this again. It's up, and this is a continuance, so the floor is yours.
And just so, at the last meeting, there was no testimony taken. It was just the attorney getting up to explain that you're asking for continuance.
Right.
So everyone is eligible at this point to act and vote on this application.
Okay, right. Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Howard Kahoon. I represent Samil Patel. He's here on my right, and we are here for that petition this evening. This petition seeks to redevelop the old Getty Gas Station property at 711 Main Street here in Howard Center. We've been to the Historic District Commission. You'll be glad to hear. And they have, after working with them and neighbors, we've come up with a plan which we think fits Howard Center and its historic nature. We've come up with a building. We've cut down the size of that building, 1,000 square feet. We were originally at 4,500. We're now at about 3,400 square feet. We've moved it right onto the sidewalk, onto the Main Street, in keeping with Ruggies, the Tile Shop, and Reds. The, the architecture is in keeping with those buildings and the ones, various spots around Howard Center known as Greek Revival. This is a double-house Greek Revival. We are going to use it as a convenience store. There'll be a takeout deli service there. There'll be two apartments above, primarily, I think, at this point in time, it'll be for help that work in the store. I think that will give a good 24-hour presence, which I think is always good for any building. We are doing away with one of the curb cuts on Main Street. As you, I'm sure, remember, there were two ways to come into the gas station. We're closing one of them, keeping the other one open. That allows for two and maybe three additional parking spaces on the Main Street. I think that that plan shows some, or the, excuse me, that plan shows 19 parking spaces, which I think we've reduced it to in terms of our needs, whereas the...
I may have the old one on here.
Do we have the 21? Is that what we have? In any event...
I did this at 3:30 today, so I may not have updated the plans. But the board members do have them.
So my clients have operated under a lease at the present Main Street Market, which is adjacent, next door, going east on Main Street, Main Street Market, for 10 years. Four or five years ago, and that's been a, pretty much a convenience store, four or five years ago, they added a liquor license there and have sold package store goods in conjunction with the convenience store. We propose that if approved, we will move the convenience store into this new structure, and the old struc, the other structure that we lease, present property, will be solely the package store. And that's the situation, basically.
And this is the right plan. This only has 17.
Right.
If you look in front of the dumpster, it shows the hatched area for no parking.
I would say that we have worked very seriously with neighbors and also with those neighbors that are on Parallel Street to give as much of a buffer zone as we can to them. Although it's not shown on that plan, we propose to put up a fence of our own, on our own property, in addition to the neighbors that are directly, but on Parallel Street. They have their own fence, but we will put up another fence. We're currently talking with them about screening and landscaping so that their, our impact on them will be as less, as small as possible. In any event, you've been a long night, and I don't want to speak too long. Certainly, if you have questions or comments or concerns, we'd be glad to hear them.
Sure. Charlene?
Yes, thank you. The applicant has asked for several waivers. There have been no variances granted for the property, so there's, they're requesting that that not have to be noted on the plan. Board of Health has not provided any approvals or restrictions at this point. The gross area of wetland, there is no wetland. Mark areas set aside for conservation areas. There are no conservation or recreation areas, and there are no easements. Health, the site plan includes a septic leaching area designed of 888 gallons per day. Title V requires a minimum of 10,000 gallons per day when food service is involved. The floor plan indicates a deli is proposed. This is a...
Thousand gallons.
What did I say?
Ten thousand.
Oh, geez, no, a thousand. Thank you. Hey, you guys are listening to me.
One thousand.
The floor plan indicates a deli is proposed. This is a food service and requires a minimum of 1,000 gallons per day to be provided for the septic system. At a meeting with the applicant in April, this requirement was explained. It appears that access, a septic system of this size can be designed on the site without the need for variances. From the Board of Health, revised plans will be required for approval of the septic system and building permits. Food service permit is required from the Health Department, which will encompass review of the floor plan. The Health Department does not have any objections to this project as proposed, aside from the size of the septic system design requiring revisions. That would not have to be completed before this board acts, so, you know, they can do that later. Conservation Police and DPW have no concerns. Fire Department, no concerns. Great project. Engineering, they did have a number of comments received on the previous plan, which I do believe I included with the board. We did get revised plans on June 3rd, 2019, and the town engineer did have the opportunity to review those plans. We just got those comments yesterday. I did share those with the applicant and his representative, and I'll just go through that list very quickly.
Sure.
Site plan, layout plan. A painted crosswalk is recommended at the proposed driveway. I don't have a pointer, but I think you guys know where that is. Grading and drainage plan, the proposed infiltration system shall be setback a minimum of 50 feet from any soil absorption system. Test pits and percolation data have been submitted for the rear of the site. No test pit or percolation data appears to have been provided for the location of the infiltration system. However, the test pit data for the rear of the site is consistent across the four test pits. The third bullet under that, the proponent applicant shall be responsible for constructing sidewalks in accordance with AVA and MAS AAB requirements and standards. A detailed grading plan depicting the proposed sidewalk and curb cut elevations has not been provided. Utility plan, the proposed septic soil absorption, try again, the proposed septic soil absor- absorption reserve area should be located a minimum of 50 feet away from the proposed stormwater infiltration system. Lighting plan, the proponent shall confirm that the proposed lighting is fully shielded. The proposed lighting plan indicates that there will be a light trespass on abutting properties in the street. I mean, it's gonna go onto the abutting properties a little bit. Site plan, wheelchair ramp detail, the ramp should be a minimum of four feet wide. Five foot wide is preferred. A ladder type crosswalk detail is recommended for the crosswalk. Drainage computation received on the third. Test pits and percolation tests have been submitted for the rear of the site. No test pit for the percolation data appears to have been provided for the location of the infiltration system. However, the test pit data for the rear of the site is consistent across the four test pits. I, I did speak with Attorney Kahoon today, and I said, definitely touch base with the town engineer to make sure that, that these are resolved. I don't think they're gonna have a problem with resolving any of those. As far as my comments, for once, they're actually brief. The proposed change to the property will be a vast improvement. This property has sat vacant for many years. To see this property revitalized is advantageous to the neighborhood. B, as the revised plans were only received on the third, late in the day, review on my part was not completed, and comments from engineer, I had reviewed this previously, and I did not have a lot of comments at that time. Recommend that the board allow for a complete presentation by the applicant, including the revised information provided on the new plans. I do believe that the waivers requested are reasonable, and I, at this time, after hearing from the applicant, staff recommends a continuance of the public hearing to a date and time certain to allow for staff review and other questions, comments, as they may come up, so that they can address those in the plans.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Okay, any, any comments at all from the board? Joe?
Just to make, make sure I understand, you're gonna leave the liquor license where it is?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so you're not, you don't propose to apply, not jurisdiction, of course, but you don't, you don't propose to apply for a liquor license for this facility?
No, my understanding of liquor licenses, it's based on population, and I don't know if there's any even available, but if we wanted, and I don't think it would be in the public's best interest if I were the licensing board, to have two liquor licenses side by side like that. That's absurd.
I understand. I just want to make sure.
There's always been a package store in Howard Center, and this is, this is the one. And in order for us, if we wanted to move it, we would have to have a separate hearing. We would be within 500 feet of the church.
Nothing to do with this board.
Has nothing to do with this, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing to do with that board, no. And so if we wanted to have it, if we wanted to move that, we'd have to go before the selectmen and, and have a hearing, just to move it 100 feet, or whatever it would be, into the new building. But we don't propose to do that. We have a spot we're releasing, and we're gonna expand the liquor store perhaps there. Leave it right there.
Now, just one last question. I've been looking at your plan. They're gonna have to grade on the back of this lot in order to...
You know, the, the engineer has assured me, and unfortunately, he's the chairman of his zoning board of appeals in Dartmouth, and he couldn't be here tonight. But I've made it abundantly clear that he, he'll be at the next meeting, or we'll fire him. But seriously, he's, he said that, that the amount of land that we have and so forth, that he can go, you know, three inches a foot or something, and so at 20 feet, I mean, he's assured me that any retaining wall or, that it's not that big a drop, and that we're, we're going to have some fill that we're gonna be using to move back here, and it's all gonna work out without...
We're not concerned about that, because there's a drop on the back?
There is a drop, that's right. And, and you know, I, I've told the neighbors, and I'm sure you may hear from them, these people live on Parallel Street, Peter and Susan, and they're concerned about the screening, and they're concerned about what's back there, and I'm afraid we don't have anything on this plan to show them, and we want to get that, and we want to get their agreement and so forth. And there are also, I think, a screening, so we don't want to just go out there and cut everything down and then just plant new. I mean, we've got some good stuff out there, especially as they look out their backyard to the present Main Street Market that does not need to be cut, I don't believe, and it's, it's all mature and beneficial for them, and we don't need to cut anything. We don't need to clear cut this lot, and I think that we can leave some of that, and I think that would be advantageous to people.
Thank you.
And I do want to point out that the crosswalk is definitely on the new plans, as it's supposed to be across the driveway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on Joe's question about the, the grading on the rear of the property, it looks to me that it's about a six or seven foot drop from the back of the parking lot to the end of the property line.
I think that's true.
Roughly fifty, looking at the elevation. So to Joe's question about regrading that area, did I understand you correctly to say you did not plan to do that? Or...
No, there'll be, there'll be fill that will be put in...
Okay.
To some degree, because of the excavation of, of the building, and we may need to put in some fill also, but it, it doesn't seem to be a big problem for our engineer.
So you don't, you don't have any set plan yet to bring the grade at the rear property line up to roughly closer, the level of the parking lot at 55 versus 50? It's still gonna grade down the existing grade?
There'll be, there'll be something of a retaining wall, I think, at one point in the, in there. But the, the property goes down, and then it comes back up as it goes to Peter and Susan's property, and so we'll at least certainly come up to that, and, and I think maybe there may be a need for some sort of a retaining wall, not too large, at, at some point along that way.
So the retaining wall that you're speaking of would not necessarily be at the back of the parking lot. It might be halfway between the back of the parking lot and the back of the property line.
That's correct.
Depending on what your engineer requires.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there is a retaining wall proposed, that will need to be shown on the plans...
Yeah.
Before the board can make any kind of decision. Because any, any site improvements, and a detail, any site improvements need to be shown on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah. One other question, Mr. Chairman, please. I thought I read something at some point previously about this, that there was discussion for stairs or steps leading from this property to the existing structure now? Is, I don't see that on the plan, and I just wondered if, did I make that up, or did I read it somewhere?
Someone brought that up in opposing our plan at one point before the Historic Commission, saying that they would be trampling down and going from one spot to the other. I, I don't think that, as I look at the property, there'll be, there's no steps proposed.
Okay.
And I don't think that'll be, that'll be a problem. I think that people who want their liquor will get their liquor, and people who want their milk will get their milk.
Thank you.
Just don't put liquor in milk. Oh, it's a narrow, sorry, I forgot that one.
Any other comments from the, from the planning board? Before we begin the public discussion, Charlene, at this point, I'd like to read this letter into the record, so...
And I know they are also here.
Yeah, right. I'm gonna read your, your letter. So this is from Susan Seedor.
Didn't get read the last time, because they opened and continued.
Okay, Susan Seedor and Peter Antonellis. And they're from 100, 100 Parallel Street, Harwich, Mass. And this is to Charlene Greenhouse. Dear Ms. Greenhouse, as you know, the applicant's project is of great significance for Harwich Center and for us as abutting property owners. Regarding our own personal interest, we have on several occasions discussed the proposed project with the current owner of parcel 41, Robbie Basel, the applicant, Sumail Patel, and his attorney, Howard Kahoon. These discussions have been very promising. We have stressed our concerns that an appropriate and adequate space and physical barrier in perens, AKA buffer, closed perens, be established and maintained between our residence and the proposed convenience store, and the parties have stated their intention to preserve as much separation as possible between the two entities. To date, however, the engineering plans currently on file depict few of the elements needed to create the buffer that we believe is necessary to mitigate nuisance and preserve green space. We will continue to work with parties in the days ahead to resolve important issues, including the precise placement of fences and the addition of new vegetation, and the preservation of several sizable and aged trees along the perimeter of the site. According to your assessment, perens, staff report dash site plan review special permit dash O52219, closed perens, the planning board requires additional information before it has completed application upon which to commence its review and deliberations. Perens, at the same time, Attorney Kahoon has yet to obtain needed information from the applicant's engineer, closed perens, end sentence. We trust that we will have the opportunity to review a complete and appropriate plan in the coming weeks. Owing to a prior commitment, we were unable to attend the public hearing that is scheduled for Thursday, May 30th, 2019. Sincerely, Susan Seedor and Peter Antonellis. Thank you very much. Charlene?
I have that.
Anyway, so, are there any comments?
My name is Susan Seedor, and I live at 100 Parallel Street. And I guess our comment is about the posting, and it appears, well, first of all, I want to say that the applicants have been working on this, and we appreciate their time and effort, and all of what we wrote in the letter was accurate. But about this posting, it says, the applicant, application proposes to redevelop the property by raising the former gas station, and this is a quote, constructing a retail store with two dwelling units above it. So to me, this is somewhat misleading, because there is food service there, so I just want to put that out there, that there... that they're proposing a deli, which falls under the, under the use of fast food takeout restaurant.
I think at the time, you were not proposing a deli. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
It may be, we'd have to take a look at that. It may be that it will need that.
Well, that was actually in the narrative that was submitted in April. It says that Mr. Patel...
It may be that we missed it. I don't...
And the health board talks about food service, which this retail store with two apartments doesn't exactly cover food service. And...
If I may interrupt for a moment, I'm Peter Antonellis. Susan's my wife. The issue with regard to what the posting says or doesn't say was of concern to us, because I think one of your members is on the historic district commission as well, and certainly, looking back over the meetings that we had with the historic commission, there was a lot of neighborhood interest in what was going to happen at this site. And understandably, the historic district commission said, well, that's not of our concerns. We're concerned about architecture, and that's the extent to which we'll respond. But the posting doesn't say it was for fast food. It doesn't say it was for a deli. Excuse me?
If I might, in the application that was submitted, and run the narrative, in the application, it does not indicate a special permit for fast food or takeout, for restaurant, fast food takeout. So that's why it's not in here. So it may be that the deli use would require a future special permit from the planning board, which would not preclude the site plan from moving forward. It's just that they couldn't operate the deli until they got a special permit. So, it's not a major issue or concern at this point, in my opinion.
I just also, it then raises the question of whether or not the parking requirements related to a fast food takeout restaurant were part of the calculation made for the spaces required.
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you.
So we don't know whether or not that includes, like, the six extra spaces that are for a takeout restaurant, plus the, if they have any tables or things inside, they have to accommodate the seats. So, I mean, I guess I'm bringing this up, because I, I would like to see these issues kind of shown on the next plan, if in fact this gets continued.
Do you have any response?
Can I respond to this one?
Yes, please.
It doesn't appear to be there. However, it was mentioned in some of Charlene's early reviews. And I believe we went over the number of spaces that were needed based on square footage of the convenience store, based on one and a half for each dwelling unit on the second floor. And I'm quite sure we took into account the takeout deli, and I remember thinking, at one point, we even wanted to have maybe some seats, but that would have required much more parking. So I think that it may be in the, in the parking space requirements. I think that that's the case.
It's not. But your parking space requirements also still show 19 spaces. And you're down, I think, 17.
17, yeah.
Yeah, these came in on June 3rd or 4th, and I haven't even had a chance to review them, so.
Well, if I may, we're glad to see it continued. As we wrote back in a week or so ago, and as you read earlier, Mr. Chairman, we haven't seen the plan that shows a resolution of what the buffer is going to look like and the size and scope of that. So we're eager to look at that. We're also eager to look at the planning, because as Charlene has said, if there's going to be a retaining wall, where is that retaining wall going to be to the rear of the property? And also related to that is if they are going to be required to have an additional, a larger septic system, excuse me, that may have a bearing on the location of the operation and its distance from our property. We're talking about a particular screen, but if it gets changed, that is, if what happens on the site is changed because of the septic system changes, then that may have an impact on the size and the location of the buffer. One other thing related to the buffer or the green space, there is on one of the maps, a designated absorption area that might be needed for the additional, the larger sized septic system. If that's, if that's going to require, you know, I'm not a septic person, but if it's going to require, you know, a digging and removal of the earth and replacement, it's going to have a bearing on what is removed for the wooded area. There's a substantial wooded area right now in the southeast corner of that property that shields us and our neighbors from what happens already at the existing marketplace that is adjacent to the east of, to the east of this proposal. So, depending on what's required for septic, we may suddenly lose the buffer, we may lose the wooded area. It's of concern to us. So we're looking forward to seeing what happens in the plans that are yet to be submitted.
Thank you.
And, you know, just to add that we appreciate all of the changes that were made from the very first one that went before the historic district, and those are very generous to us, and we appreciate that. And we hope we can work things out, and...
We will. Don't worry.
Generally supportive of the, of the plan, but...
Absolutely.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jenny Hewitt, on Main Street in Harwich Center, and I just wanted to speak in support of the project. I think it'll be a huge improvement in Harwich Center, and really help revitalize the center. I think the applicants have done excellent job with the design, from what they originally had intended. They listened to the community, and I think it replicates the Three Sisters very well. So, they took a lot of the community's concerns to heart when they did the design. I've heard a lot of enthusiastic support at the Harwich, at the historic district, historic commission meeting from community members, and many of people who spoke. And personally, I just wanted to say, the Batels are my neighbors, or have been my neighbors for, I think, maybe 15 years. So I know the family and the history. They're hardworking, they're good community people. Samile graduated from Harwich High School, so he's a hometown kid we can be proud of. I think they will run a quality operation. I know they've been great neighbors to me personally, although the family isn't there now, it's other, but they still own the property. So I think, you know, I trust that they would work with the abutters and resolve their concerns. I'm happy to see a mixed use. I'm personally looking forward to walking over there and getting something from the deli for lunch. But also, the housing component. For people who don't know, when the Brooks Block was built in 1880, which is the central portion of the library, there were stores on the first floor, the library was on a portion of the second floor, and an apartment for the first, an apartment was on the second floor also for the first librarian, and some offices. And so, it's kind of nice to see that idea of mixed use development come back, has historic roots, and things come back into fashion again. So I like, like that component being included. And I also, you know, would just like to propose future changes in Harwich Center where apartments for librarians would be provided.
That's great. Beautiful.
Touche.
So, that's good. I just wanted to say, I think that we can work out any problems that may have been raised relative to the septic system destroying any buffer zone. I have had conversations with the engineer that we were a perk test taken four years ago, when the owner at this time, owner, not, the owner actually still owns it, we have it under a purchase and sale agreement.
Yep.
When he was going to try to develop it and so forth. And as Charlene indicated, the perk test all showed that it was consistent. And so I don't think there's going to be any problems, and we can certainly come up with that thousand gallon limits and so forth. And as I hear tonight, we need to address the parking relative to the proposed delicatessen, as well as the dwelling units and the stores as it is going to be used. And that we need to really zero in on and give you the detail you need relative to coming off the back of the property in terms of any retaining walls, and in terms of perhaps more of a detailed planting area and so forth, and where that fence will be in the back. My question is, if we can get that to you, Charlene, in the next, this week, if we can get that to you this week, can we have that for the next hearing?
Certainly try.
Yeah. I don't know, why not? Right?
That would be the 25th.
Correct.
Is there anybody else who wants to comment?
Any other comments from the audience? Anybody? This has been a model of how to proceed, by the way. Thank you all very much.
Well, we, I won't comment on that.
Yeah.
Thank you, though. Any other people, anybody else have some input? I know, Mary, I think we have to come back to historic at some point in time for a sign, and maybe a few other little things that we want to press up.
So my only, my only comment there would be, anything that...
Going to be seen.
That's going to be seen would have to come back for, to historic, under a certificate of appropriateness.
Exactly.
So...
The retaining wall, I don't think is going to be seen, it's going to be buried in the back.
Anything that can be seen from the...
From the road.
From the road.
Either one, either Parallel Street or Main Street.
Exactly. It includes Parallel Street. And things like the lighting, I don't remember whether we saw a lighting design...
You know, there's some lighting designs here and everything.
And I don't know...
And the engineer talks about too much illumination and shield it and so forth, and I, for the life of me, I can't figure out why, that seems like a simple thing, and I, you know...
Well, the, any, I think the design of the light and the fence and those items would...
Would trigger.
Would come back to historic for, but I also, I'll say through the chair to Charlene, I suspect that that could all happen after, after planning board completes.
Oh, I think that's fine. I think that's fine. But as far as the lighting, the plan that was presented for the lighting lumens.
Yes.
Shows that it does go out.
It goes out.
I think that's easily resolved by the shielding. You just need to give us what that shielding is going to look like.
Okay.
And it would need to be actually more consistent with appeasing the historic, with the understanding historic needs to realize that it needs to be shielded. So, there needs to be that give and take. And I know Ms. Maslowsky knows that, and will work to that.
The board will appreciate that as well.
Yes.
I just have a quick question for you folks on Parallel Street. Did anybody ever reopen that coffee shop that was open on Parallel Street?
The property was sold a few years ago, and it was converted into two, well, it always kind of was, two houses.
Yeah.
So the one, the owner's son and daughter and their children live there.
Nobody can hear them. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Not that it has anything to do with this application.
Yeah, not that relevant, anyway.
Yeah. But people are going to hear dead air and wonder what we're all about.
It's actually, it's actually a good question. It's actually a very good question, and I'll be brief about it. The owner's, or the owner's children and grandchildren live in one half of that property, and the other half of the property is, is it long-term or short-term rentals? It's like a bed and breakfast. And it's doing quite well, and they're operating...
But there's no, no coffee shop or restaurant in there?
No, no.
Not that I'm aware of.
Was for a long time, several years.
It was for a few years.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Move to continue to June 25th?
No later than, no earlier than 6:30 PM?
No later than, earlier than 6:30 PM.
Will you be here?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really appreciate your patience and good work.
Thank you.
Thank our selectmen to sit through all of this this evening. Nice to have you, sir.
So, if we could kind of move along here, we've got, we're now in the public meeting portion of...
We have nothing.
We don't have anything?
No, sir.
No new business?
Nope.
No old business? Any briefings or reports by board members?
I'll give one brief, very brief briefing. The Community Preservation Committee is holding its public hearing on Thursday night in this room at 6:00 PM. I encourage everybody watching and anybody here to consider attending. It is required under the Community Preservation Act that the CPC holds a public hearing annually, and it is the Community Preservation Committee's time to hear from the public as to what the town of, people in the town of Harwich think our community preservation needs are. So, I would encourage everybody to attend, to attend that. Thursday, 6:00 PM, this room.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary, very much. Craig?
Just a general question about meeting minutes. Do we have certain timeframes at which we have to publish minutes?
The next meeting or within 30 days?
Next meeting or within 30 days.
Whichever's greater.
Two weeks.
Okay.
No, whichever's greater. We are a little bit behind, as our note taker has had horse issues.
Okay.
The horse is fine, but she's not been able to attend. That's why I've been taking copious notes. I think the last set of notes I wrote was 21 pages.
We were in the other room, weren't we?
Charlene?
Yeah.
You're a...
Happy to do it.
You're an example for everyone.
I didn't ask.
Thank you all so much. So do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much.